All right, being six thirty, we call a common council meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and
All right, Dr. Igerston, real call has been taken.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Barrington.
Second.
Second made by Mr. Roberts. Any additions or corrections to those? Carrying none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion is carried by all. Mr. Frichay, approval for, oh, no, wait a minute. Approval of the six seventeen twenty twenty five common council meeting minutes.
Move to approve the minutes, your honor.
Motion made by Mr. Frichay, second by Mr. Herter. Any additions or corrections to those? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion is always also carried. Now we're up to Mr. Frichay for authorization to pay the bills.
Your honor, I move to authorize to pay the bills in the amount of one million two hundred and thirteen thousand eight hundred and sixty one dollars and thirty one cents.
That motion is made by Mr. Frichay.
Second.
Second by Ms. Magowski. Any additions or corrections to those? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion is carried nine zero. All right. Public comment? Looking for public comment. Hearing none, we will move on to standing and special committees. Board of Public Works, Mr. Hess.
Thank you, your honor. Board of Public Works met Monday, July first. A meeting is called order at five fifteen. What was made in second as you approved the agenda carried by all. There was no public input. Motion made in second for approval of the May fifth meeting minutes. Motion was carried by all. Wastewater treatment plan update wastewater notes are closed in the packet. Next is review bid tab or recommend awarding HVAC unit replacement. At the senior center to Huffman Heating and Cooling Incorporated, three bids received for the HVAC unit replacement as a senior center. Director Garsky provided a bid tab information through the Huffman Heating and Cooling came at the lowest bid at four to three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. As were recommended to award Huffman Heating, the cooling, heating and cooling in the contract. Motion was made in second and was carried by all. Review and recommend stop sign ordinance for uncontrolled intersection. Director Garsky listed five uncontrolled intersections where stop signs would be placed. In discussion is it was recommended by Mr. Roberts to reevaluate the stop sign placement. At the intersection of Miller Street and Smith Street. When a weather condition makes it difficult to accelerate from the top position on the incline. Director Garsky would look into it. Motion was made in second to review and recommend stop sign ordinance for uncontrolled intersections. Motion was carried by all. Discussion recommended council STP urban grant application for Pearl Street. The STP urban applications have opened up again. New London has applied for the Pearl Street three times unsuccessfully. And it was stated that there was no guarantee that would it would be rewarded to London at this time. It was discussed how the positives outweigh the negatives for this large project. Anticipated budget for applying for the grant is three thousand dollars. The probable cost estimated the project for Pearl Street would range from two point eight million, three point two million dollars. If New London was awarded grant would bring the cost down to twenty percent of those numbers. Which would be five hundred and sixty to six hundred and forty thousand dollars. Motion made in second and who would recommend a council STB urban grant application for Pearl Street. Motion was carried by all. Directory report director's memo was included in the packet and reviewed by the board. Anniversaries Ben Grule, chief wastewater operator, twenty five years of service. Luke Hammond, street superintendent, ten years of service. Street planning, construction information updated on the webpage. Oshkosh Street. Finished curb and gutter in phase one, fine graining just started on Monday. Looking to shut down Wolf River Avenue for several days to pave the intersection. Host and Elkan Road reconstruction scheduled to start July fourteenth. Sidewalk and asphalt patching is out for bid. Our RFP for the city citywide garbage collection is ready and will be published and bids presented at the August committee meeting. Future gen items, the citywide garbage disposal. Time and day of the next Board of Public Works meeting is Monday, August fourth at five fifteen. Being no further discussion, we adjourned at five forty three. I can make a motion to consider approval of contract in amount of forty three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars with Huffman Heating and Cooling Incorporated for the HVAC unit replacement at the senior center.
Motion made by Mr. Hess.
A second.
Second by Mr. Ritchie. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion is carried nine zero.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of ordinance to install stop signs at Smith and Jefferson Streets. First reading.
That motion made by Mr. Hess, second by Ms. Magowski. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. Motion carried nine zero as well.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of STB urban grant application for Pearl Street. Estimated cost, three thousand dollars.
Motion made by Mr. Hess, second by Mr. Barrington. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion is also carried nine zero.
That's all I have, your honor.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. Finance and personnel, Mr. Frichay.
Thank you, your honor. Finance Personnel Committee met Wednesday, July second, twenty twenty five. Meeting was called order at five fifteen. Minutes were approved unanimously. There was no public comment. Next up, finance director and Brent Nelson, CPA audit partner from Johnson and Block. Discuss the twenty twenty four year end audit presented to us. Mr. Nelson and the finance director Radke responded to questions upon completion of questions on the twenty twenty four audit. The committee thanked Mr. Nelson. The finance director Radke had accepted the audit. Motion was made and seconded to recommend a council denial of a claim. That motion carried ten zero. The claim was against the city regarding a with a property owner. Motion was made by Roberts, second by Frichay to recommend a council approval of a resolution to borrow from the state. Trust loan, trust fund loan program in the amount of two hundred and fourteen thousand. For Department of Public Works bucket truck on a three year term. And this most that motion was carried ten zero. Motion was made by BSA, second by Barrington to recommend a council approval of a resolution to borrow from the state trust fund loan program. The amount of three hundred and eighty six thousand for the Oshkosh Street program. This is on a ten year term and the motion carried ten zero. Next, finance reports were reviewed. Finance director's report was discussed. And there was no further business, so the meeting was adjourned at five fifty four P M. There are a couple items to be brought forth to the council tonight. First in your packet, you'll see a monthly license list recommended for approval by the police department. I make a motion. To follow the police department's recommendation and approve those licenses.
That motion made by Mr. Frichay.
Second.
Second by Mr. Herter. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion is carried by all.
Next, I make a motion to denial. For the denial of a beverage operator's license for Brad Furmanek based on police department recommendations.
That motion made by Mr. Frichay.
Second.
Second by Mr. Herter. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion is carried nine zero.
Next, I make a motion to consider approval of a resolution to borrow from the state trust fund loan program. In the amount of two hundred and fourteen thousand for the DPW bucket truck.
That motion made by Mr. Frichay.
A second.
Second by Mr. Ritchie. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion is carried nine zero.
Next, I make a motion to consider approval of a resolution to borrow from the state trust fund loan program in the amount of three hundred and eighty six thousand for the Oshkosh Street project.
Motion made by Mr. Frichay, second by Mr. Barrington. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. Mister. That motion is carried nine zero.
Lastly, your honor, I'd like to consider action on the denial of the claim request.
The motion made by Mr. Frichay.
Second.
Second by Mr. Roberts. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion is also carried nine zero.
Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Mr. Frichay. All right, park and recreation, Mr. Bisaw.
Thank you, your honor. Park and Recreation met Tuesday, July first. Meeting was called order at five forty five. Motion was made to approve the agenda. Motion is carried seven oh. Motion made to approve the June third meeting minutes. That motion also carried eleven oh. Public input, there was none. Approve and recommend a council amendment to agree with Harry's associates for a thirty percent design and engineering of the Newton Blackmore Bridge. Director Saul introduced Craig Schuh from Harry's Associates for him to provide the details of the agreement. This agreement is an amendment amendment to the initial entire Newton Blackmore Trail project that had a deadline date to to grant funding. This agreement allows areas to continue with thirty percent of the design and engineering needed to complete the floodplain assessment to determine the project's viability. Will include the bridge design, working with FEMA and continuing to work with the D N R and railroad company. Motion was made in second to approve the and recommend the council minimum agreement with areas. Associates for thirty degree design and engineering in Blackmore Trail. The motion carried eleven one, ten one. Approved and recommend council contract awarded in northeast asphalt in the amount of four hundred and twenty eight thousand two hundred and eighty four dollars and fifty cents. For Wolf River Courtesy Parking and North Street Reservicing. Directors all noted two projects were combined. Wolf River Courtesy Parking lot along with the North Street Reservicing with the Public Works Department. Take advantage of the cost savings. Northeast asphalt had the lowest bid of four hundred and twenty eight thousand two hundred and forty eight dollars and fifty cents. A ground break would take place July twenty first, twenty twenty five, including the first week of September. This will include part of the walking trail for Water Supper Club going west to Johnny's bait shop. Motion is made in second to approve and recommend a council contract awarded to northeast asphalt. The amount of four hundred and twenty eight thousand two hundred and forty eight dollars and fifty cents. For the Wolf River Courtesy Parking and North Street Reservicing. Motion is carried by all, eleven oh. Consider recommend a resolution authorizing this middle of an application toward the Wisconsin D N R grant. Purpose of developing archery range at seven forty River Road. Director Saul brought to the committee a grant proposal that can be submitted to the D N R. For the development of an archery range on River Road just past the J C Dog Park. Motion is made in second to consider recommending a resolution authorizing this middle. An application towards the Wisconsin D N R grant for the purpose of developing an archery range at seven forty River Road. Motion was carried by all, eleven oh. Director's work report was included in the agenda packet reviewed by the committee. Additional comments, notes as follows. Fee study for the fee study for future fees schedule per proposal. Tree inventory in progress, receiving a grant for a sign for Hatton Park. Submitted the S B A R C application to East Center Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission to continue. Plan for redesign downtown park space. Staff recognitions Connor Blair, park screw of three years, Luke Hammond, park superintendent, ten years of service. The chairman's report, there was none. Future agenda items were none. The next park and rec meeting meeting will be on Monday, July fourth, immediately following public works. If any no further discussion, meeting was adjourned at six eighteen. I would look for approval. And amend and recommend a council amendment to agree with the areas. Associates for a thirty percent degree in engineering for the Newton Blackmore Bridge.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Bisaw, second by Mr. Hess. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion is carried eight yes, one no.
I would also for approval and recommend a council. A contract awarded to northeast asphalt in the amount of four hundred and twenty eight thousand two hundred and forty eight dollars and fifty cents. For Wolf River Courtesy Parking and North Street Reservicing.
Motion made by Mr. Bisaw.
Second.
Second by Mr. Herter. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion is carried nine zero.
And I would look for approval of recommending a resolution authorizing this middle. Of an application towards the Wisconsin D N R grant for the purpose of developing an archery range at seven forty River Road.
Second.
That motion made by Mr. Bisaw, second by Mr. Frichay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. That motion is carried nine zero as well.
That's all I have, your honor.
Thank you, Mr. Bisaw. Up next, planning commission, Mr. Ritchie.
The planning commission met June twenty sixth, twenty twenty five. Meeting was called order at five fifteen. Motion was made in second to adopt the agenda. Motion carried by all. The May twenty second, twenty twenty five minutes were reviewed. Motion was made in second, carried by all. Planning Commission. Open for public comment. There was none. The first action item on the agenda was the request to construct an accessory. In excess of a square footage and height restriction of what current zoning ordinance allows without planning commission review and approval. The address for the request is six oh three House Road. The sixteen hundred square foot building with a two hundred and forty square foot lean to it maximum height seventeen. The sixteen hundred square foot building with a two hundred and forty square foot lean to it, a maximum height seventeen feet. Motion was made in second to approve the request carried by all. Second item. On the agenda was a submission of a site plan seeking approval for a mission, mission to move ahead. The address of the project was. Three thousand eighty Frederick Farm Lane, zoning administrator recommended approval based on the application. Motion was made in second, that was carried by all. Third item on the agenda was C S M for a lot combination of eight twelve West Millard. And a vacant lot thirty-three dash thirteen dash seventy-five dash eighty-five. Directly to the south, the owner is seeking to combine lots to allow for accessory structure. The motion was made and approved. To approve the C S M by. Mayor Mark was seconded, most of that. In that, so the plan, plan commission reviewed. From the preliminary plot for Irish Meadows subdivision. This is the work in progress, as there will be need to be more work performed by utilities, public works and the city's engineers in firm. The first review was to seek questions and comments from the planning commission for the plot. Creation thus far and to provide direction if necessary to move the plot process along. Upcoming agenda items currently is just to continue the discussion on zoning code rewrite. And to continue the plot process for Irish Meadows subdivision. Motion was made seconded. To adjourn the meeting, that was carried by all. The meeting was adjourned at five thirty-three. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie. Economic Development Committee, Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, the economic, economic development committee meeting. Met on Tuesday, June twenty-fourth. The meeting was called to order at five fifteen. The agenda was approved as presented. The minutes from the May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five meeting were reviewed and approved as presented. There was no public, public comment provided. Peyton Len here was introduced to the committee as the new joint grant writer for the New London Chamber. The New London School District and the City of New London. She provided a brief overview of her professional background and discussed potential future grant opportunities. Related to economic development and growth. The committee opened a public hearing to receive input regarding a proposal from Avonville. An energy company to purchase property in the city's Northeast New London Business Center. For a substation and maintenance facility. The substation would be connected to the proposed solar farm array located nearly two miles north of the city's corporate limits. Those who spoke against the project included Paul Zimer, Scott Cartwright, Paul Gitter, Steve Thompson. Treg First and Troy Monk. All of whom identified as residents of the town of Maple Creek. No one spoke in favor of the proposal. The public hearing was closed and the committee thanked those who provided input. Video and marketing producer Katie, Katie Hopkins provided an update on the city's progress in creating a new city slogan. Over the past month, slogan ideas were collected from public and local students. The submissions were narrowed down to the top seven, which included Small Town Big Welcome. Where the River Leads Home, Give Your Adventure Roots, Wisconsin's Hometown on the Wolf. Halfway to everywhere, right where you belong. On the River Flowing With Pride and Where the Community, Where the Wolf Flows Community Grows. The committee members voted on their top three choices, which were Where the Wolf Flows Community Grows. Where the River Leads Home and Small Town Big Welcome. There was a motion made to accept the committee's top three slogan choices and to proceed with a public vote to select the final slogan. That motion was carried by all. Chamber Director's Business Report, a new business, Deli Mart Food and Restaurant. Has opened at nineteen thirty-one North Shano Street. The New London Public Library had a groundbreaking ceremony for the reconstruction of the former First State Bank Building. At one thirteen West North Water Street. The Chamber held a ribbon cutting on June twenty-fifth for Ancharia Luciano. Located at two fourteen West North Water Street to showcase its newly renovated interior. Marley's Restaurant has reduced its asking price to six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The Chamber hosted its newest event, Summer Kickoff on June sixth. City Administrator's Report first provided an update. Updated list of facade grant projects and noted that one grant of four thousand dollars is still available. Um, the committee reviewed potential topics for the next meeting. Um, which will be held Tuesday, July twenty-six, twenty-second at five fifteen P M. Motion was made to adjourn the meeting at six oh one P M and was carried by all. And that is all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Minister Reports as distributed will stand as read in your packets. Uh, reports of officers on recent events and announcements to the public. We'll start off with the mayor's report. Mayor, appointments, library and museum board and New London Tourism Commission. Uh, the New London Tourism Commission appointees will stand as read in your packets. The library and museum board appointees need a motion and a second. Looking for a motion from Council.
Make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. BSA. Second by Mr. Herter. Any further discussion on those? Hearing none, please cast your ballots. Mr. Ritchie. Ballot. Cast your vote. Thank you. That motion carried nine zero. And that is all that I had. Uh, leading note next is City Administrator, Mr. Herter.
Thank you, Your Honor. As talked about in the economic development minutes, uh, we are continuing to get the word out that the city is looking for input. Updating our city's marketing slogan. We've gone through the process and like we talked about in the meeting minutes. Those, uh, choices have come to the top three, including Small Town Big Welcome. Where the River Leads Home and Where the Wolf Flows Community Grows. If you'd like to cast your vote on one of these three options, you can do so at six different locations in the city. The New London Municipal Building, the Aquatics and Fitness Center, the Senior Center, New London Public Library, New London Public Museum. And the New London Area Chamber of Commerce. If any of, um, our community members are unable to vote at one of these physical locations. You can email your vote to Katie Hopkins, our marketing, uh, video and marketing producer. At K Hopkins, that's K H O P K I N S. At newlondonw i dot org. Voting will continue until August nineteenth. Um, we do have our voting out in lobby, so I encourage anybody when you're leaving today to make sure you go vote on our new city slogan. Um, I'm also happy to announce that after being offline for over two years, Spectrum has finally upgraded our transmission system. So now we are once again transmitting our cable access channel on channel nine ninety. It's finally back online, so it's been a long process with that. Uh, Katie, our video marketing producer will now be building and adding content to the channel. It's been a long road, but I'm happy to say that the technology has been upgraded. That was probably last put in in the nineteen eighties, so, um, it's definitely an upgrade. It's now digital, um, it should be in a format that's reliable for many years to come and hopefully by, beyond my tenure here. Um, and then lastly, I want to congratulate our video marketing producer, Katie Hopkins, for completing her first year of service with the city on June twenty-sixth. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Uh, Chief Police, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, first want to recognize Officer Ryan Roll for ten years of service, Sergeant Todd Staresen. Has completed twenty-four years of service. You make your way to the police department, there's been some changes in the lobby, most notably some of the D M B forms have gone away to assure you that service isn't stopped. You stop a dispatch, they'll be able to get you whatever form you're looking for as far as the D M B forms that we had before. And finally, National Night Out, Tuesday, August fifth. Takes place in the green space between the two buildings here and, uh, we have several agencies involved. Uh, our theme this year is kind of friendly competition with the fire department and various activities. So hope to see everybody there. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Chief. Director of Public Works, Mr. Garsky.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, paving in phase one of Oshkosh Street is now complete. Wolf River Avenue will be opening first thing in the morning tomorrow. Uh, even though the first layer of asphalt is down on Oshkosh Street, the road remains closed to through traffic. So this means only residents that reside on Oshkosh Street should be using it. Restoration behind the curb will start this week and signs will go in after that. Utility work in phase two remains on schedule, even with the latest rain events we've had. House in Alkan Road Project has started and pulverizing could begin as soon as Thursday. Scheduled completion for that project is August fifteenth and that is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Garsky. Director of Park and Recreation, Ms. Saul is out of the office today, so we don't have a report from her. Utility Manager, Mr. Basset.
Thank you, Your Honor. On July fourteenth, which was yesterday at three twenty-nine Northwood Village, had a brief outage. Twenty-eight customers were affected due to a blown fuse. Uh, cre- crews, uh, were on site and restored that service within thirty minutes. And then last, I'd like to recognize Melissa Schultz, our accountant for twenty-two years of service with the utilities. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Basset. Uh, Fire Chief, Mr. Wilfer, I don't see him in the audience. Do we have a report? Hearing none, we will move on to the Museum Director, Ms. Cross. For a museum expansion project update.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you this evening. If you'll recall from our conversation in November, the library and museum board allowed me to put together a museum expansion committee. That represented all of the stakeholders involved with museum expansion project. The idea is that this advisory committee. Oversees the planning and communicates through me with the library museum board. They make recommendations and suggestions relevant to the project. The committee members have spent many hours in meetings and on field trips to develop the plan structure so far. The working groups take deep dives into the topics you see here. They bring information and suggestions to the museum expansion committee to be included in the overall planning. The M E C and staff built the structure. The working groups and staff flesh out the details. Since November, we've been hard at work on a number of items. And I wanted to take an opportunity to update you on some of those efforts. To begin with, I'm thrilled to unveil the museum's new website. This was a joint project with the Friends of the New London Public Museum. Melissa Silt, a volunteer for the Friends, Cindy Schulpe, the museum's archives manager. And I worked together with a web design company to create a more dynamic and cohesive website. For the two organizations. The museum page on the city's website will redirect visitors to our new one. The funding for this website is provided by the Friends of the New London Public Museum. In other exciting news, the Friends were awarded two grants for the next three years. To support a part-time Director of Development. The grants from the Marilyn Taylor Wool Cheese Fund. And the Community Vision Fund within the Community Foundation for the Fox Valley Region. Along with donations from the Friends Board members and a few Friends members. Allowed them to move forward with this critical position. The Director of Development will work closely with me and the Friends on a fundraising plan. I'd like to introduce LaHoma and let her tell you a little bit about herself.
Good evening, thank you. Uh, as Christine mentioned, I am the Director of Development. Library and Museum. The museum, so I come with eighteen years of experience in nonprofit sector. Um, previously have worked with Red Cross and other preservation groups, also have a background in animal care. So I have done quite a few different things, uh, within my career. I'm very excited to be here. I'm about to start a, what I call a discovery or welcome tour of the community. I am not from Wisconsin. My family does live here, though. They relocated while I was in college and have been trying to get me up here ever since. And I finally gave in two years ago. I currently live in Mina with, uh, my thirteen-year-old daughter. And we do love the community so far, but I'm sure that I will see many of you, uh, in the coming weeks and. Um, I will be in and out of the office part-time, but I do, uh, I do have space there. So anytime anyone has any questions or would just like to pop in and say hello, I'd be more than happy to entertain that. So thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, LaHoma. So speaking of the working groups, the museum expansion committee chose to meet less frequently this year. To give the working groups an opportunity to really get up and running. The three groups that are active right now are public relations, programs and building. We hope to start the fundraising working group in the near future. Each of the active groups have met a few times already this year to develop specific goals. And to start implementing a variety of initiatives. Let's start with the public relations working group. Their objective is to increase public awareness of the museum expansion project and start a dialogue with our community. The focus for the year is taking the message to the people. We want to meet people where they are and talk about the project. Find out what they've heard about it, what they think about it, and really listen to their insights and thoughts. The group is pursuing a number of initiatives, including update meetings like this one. Keeping the fast facts sheet relevant and their newest initiative, the Wait What Booth. So just what is the Wait What Booth, you ask? Well, the concept is that this is a staffed information booth that we set up at small community events and locations around town. Our objective is to get information about the museum and the expansion project out to people. We want to make it easy to get information. We also want to ask them questions. Almost like walking so, focus groups. And get the dialogue going with our community on a broader scale. The dot, the design is going to be simple, easy to transport and set up. With items designed to attract people to the table. The Wait What Wheel, which you can see here. Uh, includes bits of trivia and free prizes to get the discussion going. Historic photos are typically a big draw and we'll have a number of those as well, and of course giveaways. We're debuting the, the booth in August. The first one is going to be August second at the Historic Village. And then we're going to be doing a farmer's market. We're, we will be at the museum's, uh, water spaniel meet and greet. Whoever wanted to pet a American water spaniel, that'll be August thirteenth. Uh, August twenty-second at the Friends Group Brot Fry at Thrive It. And of course, at the September sixth Hatton Park Dedication Celebration. We'll continue to add dates throughout the fall. We do have an evaluation form that we will fill out with each booth. At the end of the year or season, the public relations working group will look over the forms and decide if the concept. Is working and if it's useful. Our newest working group is our programs group. The objective of this group is to create a framework for the educational programs offered at the museum. They are guided by the museum's education mission, which is to enhance the visitor's experience. Through dynamic collections. which is to enhance the visitor's experience through dynamic collections-based programs. The museum strives to encourage inquiry-based learning and a deeper understanding and appreciation of our collections. Our programs will maintain the reputation of museum as a high-quality and trustworthy content provider to the public. The group is focusing on developing an education master plan using the Grand Rapids Public Museum's master plan as a guide. This roadmap will be developed and tested over the course of the possibilities phase as we learn more about what our community needs and wants from the museum. The building working group has been focusing on two projects this year. The first is the storm window project. Unfortunately, when we sent this project out to bid, we did not receive any. So what we did is we kind of regrouped and we went back to Alex Ramsey from Engberg Anderson. She's actually going to rework the bid packet and reissue it in September for a bid opening in October. Hopefully, the work would then be done in twenty twenty-six. If we don't get any bids on the next go-around, we will need to reconsider our options and perhaps wait to do the storm windows until we're ready for a larger project. We've also been discussing the possibilities phase, planning and sequencing. Back in November, I presented information about the master plan, our internal guide to creating a space the community and the museum needs and wants over an extended period of time. The possibilities phase is what happens before the master plan. It is when we live in the space and adjust the plan accordingly. Once we are ready to begin implementing the master plan, we will feel secure that the needs of the collection and community are being met, and this beloved building is being preserved and utilized to its greatest potential. During the possibilities phase, we have a number of focus areas, all of them centered around community input. Through visiting and volunteering, we hope our community will help co-create the vision for their museum. We want them to test what we have in place and give us their feedback. The collection. One of the most exciting aspects is our ability to work with the artifact collections and archives in a safer way. During the possibilities phase, we intend to inventory the artifact collection, rehouse it in a way that will ensure its preservation and make it more accessible to the staff and researchers. Programs and exhibits. We will use the possibilities phase to test some of our education programming ideas. We also intend to bring the exhibits up from downstairs and set them up in what will eventually become the new exhibit space. Administration and operations. This is the phase when we figure out how we operate the building to maximize accessibility and stay within our resources. Do our budget expectations match reality? And what new avenues of revenue can we explore? Fundraising. Working with LaHoma and the working group, we want to set the master plan and operations up for success by creating and implementing a fundraising plan. And of course, the facility. We want to live in the space and make changes to the master plan on paper as needed so that when we do start working on construction documents, we will feel confident that we have a good plan in place and ready to go. As we talked about in November, we set the space up like a stage set using temporary walls and tape to figure out if our ideas for the layout are actually going to work. That is the main idea behind this phase, exploring the possibilities. We anticipate the possibilities phase lasting for about three years. In order to make the planning for this phase more manageable, we've broken it down into smaller periods of time. Right now, we are focusing on the first six months. We are investigating two different avenues of work. The first plan is looking at doing some remodeling to the building's interior on the south side, the original museum building, before we move the exhibits upstairs. The other involves moving into the space immediately. Both of these plans have pros and cons. We have presented our thoughts to Alex. She's going to talk to her team and get back to me regarding costs and if our ideas make sense. A cost and efficiency analysis of each idea will be made, and I will be able to update everyone at the next meeting. So what do we need? Volunteers. We need help with all facets of the project, from painting to operations. If you're interested, stop by, let us know, or fill out the form on our new website under the Donate Your Time button. Funding. No matter which direction we take the possibilities phase, there will be some expense involved. Right now, we are working on a budget, and it is our goal to have more details again at our next meeting. Getting the word out. Help us get the word out to the community. While we are hoping to engage the public with the Wait What Booth, we know that as representatives, you get questions. We've updated the fast facts sheet for you with some new information. One of the changes you will notice, I do have those here tonight, I'll give them out just before we leave, is that we've included the approximate number of items the museum cares for in its collection. We are often asked, do you have enough stuff to fill a bigger space? The answer is a resounding yes. Consider for a moment the last time you moved, or if you've ever had to clean out the home of a loved one. How much stuff did you have to deal with? And that was probably for a space that had only been occupied for a few decades. The museum started one hundred and eight years ago. Our community has entrusted us with preserving and sharing their items, and we look forward to seeing what else they bring us to continue to tell our story. Believe me, we have enough to exhibit and refresh exhibits so we can encourage repeat visitation and uphold our slogan of discovering something new. Not every community has a public museum or a museum that houses earth science, history, and culture under one roof. New London is a unique place. We want to make sure we are protecting what has been entrusted to us in the past and what will be given in the future. We want to build strong education partnerships within our community. We want to offer something for everyone, from the youngest to the oldest. We want to use an iconic building that our community is proud of in a new way. We want to build community pride and a sense of place, whether you've lived here all your life or only just moved in. We want to do all of this in partnership with our community. After all, it is your museum. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cross. All right, with that, we're going to move into a closed session for the following statutory exemption. Nineteen point eight five subsection one, subsection E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session regarding the sale of land in the northeast New London Business Center. I'd also like to invite to closed session the counsel, Attorney Steckbauer, City Administrator Chad Hurd, and Utilities Manager, Mr. Basset. Need a motion in a second.
I'll make it.
Motion made by Mr. Ritchie, seconded by Mr. Herter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried by all.